Welcome to the November 25th School Board Meeting. I'm School Board President Lily Kelcik. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Superintendent Isabella Averett will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is one of the times in the board meeting when community members are allowed to address the board. There will also be a public hearing at the end of the meeting. Does anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this time?
Good evening, Madam President. School Board. I have a student who attends Roseville High School. And the school passed the bond in the spring of 2018. And I was looking to see if there was any updates on the progress of the bond and what has been happening since then.
That's a very good question. Our Superintendent Isabella Averett will be happy to outline and preside over that issue.
Thank you very much for bringing up this subject. I would like to ask our Assistant Superintendent Megan Van Dam to give us some details about the importance of the bond. If any board members have any questions or comments, please feel free to ask.
We have addressed four major areas with the bond. Technology, transportation, athletic facilities, and band equipment. Our current technology in the district is out of date and starting to break down. Buses are starting to become expensive due to the age of many buses in our fleet. Our athletic facilities at our schools were in need of massive renovations. Finally, our band equipment in our schools was dated and needed to be replaced. Our communications and marketing facilitator, Michael Aliata, can give you some information about how we push information out about the bond to our community.
We have been sharing information about the progress of our bond projects in a variety of ways. We regularly share updates and pictures on social media, including Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. We also include updates in our quarterly newsletter, which gets mailed to every resident and business inside of Roseville. The newsletters also get posted to our website and emailed to our staff members. Several articles on some of our bond projects have been in our local newspapers as well. Many people cannot regularly attend board meetings, so these are good ways to inform as many Roseville citizens as possible about our positive changes.
Madam President.
Trustee Anthony Rosati.
I understand that secondary students will be receiving devices as well. When will that happen?
Assistant Superintendent Van Dam, can you answer that question?
Certainly. All of the computers have been shipped to the administration building after they were loaded with software and marked with identification tags. RHS will be getting the first batch in a week or two.
Madam President.
Trustee Trinity Cooper.
What is involved in the process of asking for a bond?
Assistant Superintendent Van Dam, can you answer that question?
In December of 2017, the state reviewed the information and told us how much money we could ask for in the bond. There are very specific guidelines that the state lays out for this. We received $59.4 million. We obtained information from our architecture firm to create this number.
Madam President.
Trustee Silk Boyd.
What were some of the guidelines that go along with the bond?
Superintendent Averett, will you please provide us with some information about the guidelines for a bond?
So there are many parameters set for how and on what we can spend the bond money. Our Executive Director of Business and Finance, Fatima Jewell, will give you further information about what can be asked for in a bond.
Bonds are similar to a mortgage and are required to be paid off in an allotted amount of time. The money to pay back the loan comes from taxes collected. None of the money can be used on a teacher, support staff, or administrator salaries. We can only use the money for very specific things approved by the state. We presented those items like Ms. Van Dam explained earlier last December. Our Board Attorney, Ms. Mashani Ward, can explain the process of getting the bond on the ballot.
The state had to approve all language that was on the actual ballot that the public saw at the election. The state wanted the district to provide wording that was clear and concise, which assured that it would be easily understood by all citizens. This was something we spent a lot of time to develop. This process may seem draconian in nature, however, these are the laws we have to follow.
Madam President. Treasurer Caleb Calloway.
What type of technology did we ask for in the bond?
I will direct that question to our Director of Technology, Ahmad Miro.
To be able to support our new district technology, we have upgraded our infrastructure. With the upgrades in the infrastructure completed, we are now able to put new equipment on our network. In August, all of the district's desktop computers were replaced, and classroom Promethean boards were installed at Eastland Middle School. Roseville High School and Roseville Middle School should have their Promethean boards installed by the end of November. Included with the new interactive boards are new classroom audio systems and PA systems. The elementary school installations will begin in December. We are looking at ways to get the most boards installed in a smaller amount of time. The bond will also adjust the outdatedness of technology in future years. We must stay competitive with our neighboring districts, so up-to-date technology is essential. This will allow us to update the technology two additional times during the term of the bond. In addition, we want our students to be exposed to technology that they will encounter in the world outside of school. The device will give students internet access for learning, which removes the need for cellphone use to look up information. This makes them the most competitive for jobs. Our Director of Building and Grounds, David Skora, can talk about technology that will address safety and security.
We are in the process of upgrading all district's security systems at all school buildings, as well as the administration building. Door monitors, key card access, and camera systems are being installed. Camera systems will now monitor every entry and exit point at each building. All exterior doors have been fitted with door sensors that will alert security staff when a door has been propped open. Exterior doors have also been fitted with key card swipe pads, which will require the use of key cards for access to buildings. In the event a key card is misplaced, it can be deactivated immediately. Informational training sessions are being provided to all support and security staff. Exterior doors have been numbered on the outside of each door to provide first responders with a point of reference, enabling location of an emergency in a timely manner.
Madam President, can I ask a question?
Yes, Secretary Flora Lord.
I think all parents and students should be excited about all the technology updates coming our way. The second major area mentioned to be addressed was transportation. Can we get some more information about that?
Absolutely. Our Coordinator of Transportation and Maintenance, Lexi Seischer, can field that question.
We have some exciting things happening. First, we were able to lower the walking distance from students at Roseville High School from two miles to 1.5 miles. Secondly, we are currently working with buses that are old and need the repairs needed to ensure safety are becoming very expensive. To make both situations a reality, we had to purchase 15 new buses. This ensures students make it to school on time and requires less maintenance of the older buses. Lastly, we have been able to update all of our camera systems on the bus, taking them from a two-camera standard system to a four-camera high-definition system. This will provide clear and full coverage should any issues happen on our buses.
Madam President.
Vice President Abby Barnett.
After attending the first home game at the new high school athletic complex, I noticed there were many upgrades. Can you take a moment to talk about the changes made to the field?
Our Director of Buildings and Grounds, David Skora, can answer that question.
The football field has been completely replaced with synthetic turf. The grounds crew has been provided with training on how to properly maintain the turf in order to prevent injuries as well as prevent wear and tear. New goalposts and pads were installed, which will help ensure the safety of the players on the field. The track has been completely replaced and upgraded from six lanes to eight lanes. The field lighting has been upgraded to LED lighting, and an additional light bulb was added. There have also been 100 additional seats added to the home bleachers, as well as a new sound system throughout the athletic complex.
Deputy Superintendent Megan Van Dam, have any improvements addressed the lack of restrooms along with the long wait at the concession?
A brand-new fieldhouse, which includes a concession stand, locker rooms, team rooms, and bathrooms, was completed this summer, just in time for our 2019 season opener. The restrooms include 21 additional bathroom stalls, and the concession stand has two points of service to better serve athletic event attendees.
Madam President.
Trustee Anthony Rosati.
Can you give us any updates on federal and state grants?
Our Coordinator of State and Federal Programs, Tyler Vassus, can answer that question.
Thank you, Madam President. We have some exciting news to share. Our district has been approved to open an additional classroom for our Great Start Readiness Program, or GSRP. GSRP is Michigan State-funded preschool for four-year-old children with factors which may place them at risk of educational failure. This is great news for our district, as this program allows 180 Roseville students free full-day preschool in order to prepare them for kindergarten. In addition, through additional grant funding, we are also able to provide GSRP students with transportation to and from school, further helping our families. Results of a research study shows that children attending full-day preschool as open to half-day preschool, such as Head Start, a federally-funded preschool program, did better mathematics and literacy tests than children in half-day preschool. That's why we hope to continue to grow our GSRP program to allow more families to reap the benefits of an early childhood education.
Treasurer Caleb Calloway.
We noticed some changes in the food service lines. How did they come about in some schools, and what are the plans for the future?
Our Coordinator of Food Services, Akil Ahmed, can provide more details.
The food service department has been able to update cafeteria serving lines and kitchen equipment with our access fund balance. The serving lines at Eastland, Huron Park, Roseville High, and Roseville Middle School have been updated. The wooden cabinets and counters at Roseville Middle have been replaced with stainless steel. New freezers, coolers, and convention ovens have been purchased for several kitchens. Future projects may include updating serving lines at Dort, Kaiser, Patton Elementary, and replacing built-in coolers at RHS and RMS. Replacing the wooden counters and cabinets with stainless steel. We continue to improve our facilities as funds allow.
Madam President.
Trustee Trinity Cooper.
I would like to shift our discussion to some of the sacrifices our staff members had had to make in order to create a balanced budget for the start of our school year.
Superintendent Averett, can you explain more about that?
The state requires that every district keep a 5% fund balance in the district's general fund. Districts must keep this fund in balance, or there are repercussions from the state, which include district takeover. Our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Rin Budina, can talk about some of the concessions staff members had to make.
All of the staff had to make furlough days, a pay reduction, and other reductions. We are extremely grateful and appreciative to the hard work our staff is doing. Their sacrifice has allowed us to continue to run our schools without state intervention.
Madam President.
Treasurer Caleb Calloway.
I think we are very lucky to have such an amazing staff in Roseville. They consistently do what is best for their students every day. Roseville Community Schools is grateful for all their work.
Our district hired many new teachers this school year. This year has been more difficult for districts to find teachers, especially in high-needs areas like special ed and mathematics. So if there are students interested in teaching, they are in high demand. Assistant Superintendent Budina, can you give us the names of our new teachers and the schools where they are teaching?
It is my pleasure to provide that information, Madam President. Jeffrey Rodd, Roseville High School. Samantha Bernowski, Kaiser Elementary. Sarah Bergens, Eastland Middle. Raquel Cardenas, Huron Park, Kaiser Elementary, Komet and Patton Elementary. Shannon Chap, Roseville Middle. Ian Chitiki, Roseville Middle, Roseville High School. Michael Craculo, Roseville High School. Marzak Isak, Kaiser. Griffin Crock, Roseville Middle. Terazak Crock, Huron Park. Evan Leuberg, Eastland Middle. Amanda Pico, Dort. Timothy Prouse, Roseville High School. Patrick Riley, Roseville Middle. Jamie Sarek, Roseville High School. Robert Schultz Sturkland, Roseville High School. Reed Stevens, Roseville High School. Mary Dilly, Roseville High School. Megan Shalup, Eastland Middle. Alexandria Ward, Roseville Middle. Kilana Younger, Huron Park.
Madam President.
Vice President Abby Barnett.
I've heard that our special education staff recently participated in a professional development on November 5th. What did this training entail?
Ms. Baller, our Director of Special Education, can explain more about that?
Yes. All teaching and support staff participated in professional development on linking a student's present levels and needs to a measurable annual goals and objectives based on those needs. The guidance from the Michigan Department of Education states that "there must be a strong connection established in these areas of a student's individualized education program." School social workers and selected staff also attend a more intense training on the areas of social and emotional needs of students.
Madam President.
Trustee Silk Boyd.
How will staff determine student presence levels?
Ms. Baller, would you elaborate on that?
Staff use observations and a variety of tools to determine students' present levels. They can also use teacher-created assessments to obtain the data needed to establish a starting point for instruction.
Madam President, can I ask a question?
Yes, Secretary Flora Lord.
With all the great things happening in our district, how are we communicating with Roseville families?
Mr. Aliata, would you please explain more about that?
Well, our district is always evaluating the different ways to share all of the great things going on in our schools with the community, and this includes social media. We have Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram pages for the district, as well as for individual schools. I mentioned our quarterly newsletter earlier, but we also put out news releases to the community, which regularly get picked up by our local East Sider and Macomb Daily newspapers. Our district cable station and new building marquees also provide key dates and event information. We also employ the school messenger service, on which our Director of Technology, Ahmad Miro, can elaborate.
By using the school messenger, our district can reach parents and staff based on their different communication preferences. We can reach parents in the way they want to receive notifications. This can be via voice, text, email, social media, web, and push notifications. Samples of notifications include school activities, attendance calls, snow day, and district-level information, etc.
Thank you, Mr. Miro. If there are no other questions or comments at this time, we'll continue with the next agenda item, which will be our second public hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to be heard?
Good evening, Ms. President and Board Members. Ms. President, I'm a proud parent of a Roseville student. We have heard that you are getting two new electric school buses. How did Roseville get these buses, and what are the advantages to the electric buses?
I'm going to direct that question to our Coordinator of Transportation and Maintenance, Lexi Seischer.
We won a grant from the Department of Environmental Quality this September after partnering with DTE Energy Thomas Bus and Proterra Battery Company. Roseville was awarded two electric buses for the cost of a standard bus. These will hopefully arrive before the start of the next school year to service in district transportation. There are some great advantages to using electric school buses. They offer zero emission, which provides clean air for our students and community. The buses are perfectly suited for electrification and allow the ability to provide power back to the grid during peak times. They can save the district money by using the buses during the day, by running the buses during the day when electricity costs more, and the buses will recharge at night when electricity costs less.
This concludes the public hearing portion of our meeting. I will now turn this over to Mr. Rice.
Our next agenda item is Nice Things Happening. As you may or may not know, every board meeting, or many board meetings, have a Nice Things Happening in Roseville to honor or identify people and their accomplishments. At tonight's board meeting, our students would like to honor individual teachers. So at this time, if I could please have all of the staff members who are being honored by students tonight, come on up and stand behind the student who's honoring you. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Today, I'm recognizing Mr. Bernowski. He was my chemistry, he is/was my chemistry teacher sophomore year. At first, I was skeptical. At first, I was skeptical because science was in my strong suit, but he made me fall in love with it. Before the trimester started, I heard from many students that he was a great teacher, but I had to see it for myself. When I first got in his class, I felt very comfortable. In the beginning, I thought that he was tired of me because I asked a lot of questions. I never felt so open in class until now. I felt comfortable talking to him about my religion, and he was very understanding. I know that it sounds crazy to choose a teacher that you only know for a couple of months, but a person can change your outlook in life even if they don't know it. I learned to love science because of him, and I deeply regret not taking your AP Chemistry class, because I know I would have learned a lot from you. My last year has taught me that you should appreciate the people who help you, no matter how small it is. I would say I wasn't really close to many teachers, but I feel as if I can talk to him if I felt down, if I haven't done it. And thank you for being my teacher, and sorry if I kept making you repeat yourself.
Tonight, I'll be recognizing Mrs. Jordan. When I was asked to choose a teacher that left the biggest impact on me in school, Mrs. Jordan was easily the first teacher that came to my mind. I was lucky enough to be in Mrs. Jordan's class not just once, but twice. Even though they might not sound that appealing, AP US History and AP Composition were hands-down my favorite classes in high school. But I can say without a doubt that this wouldn't have been the case if it wasn't for Mrs. Jordan teaching them. Mrs. Jordan is that kind of teacher who can stand in front of the class for the whole hour and just truly teach. Before entering her classroom, I had never experienced a teacher before that was so passionate and knowledgeable about the material that they taught. Her passion was contagious, and her endless knowledge made me strive to want to know even a fraction of what she knew. Not only did she give me, more of a math and science kind of person, a true love for history and writing, but she also instilled in me a work ethic that I know will last long after graduation. The greatest impact Mrs. Jordan left on me, however, wasn't when she was teaching about the Civil War or how to write in MLA format, but it was all the small moments when she indirectly inspired me and countless other students to aspire to be the best versions of ourselves one day. So whether she was telling the stories of the time she whitewater rafted through the Grand Canyon, or that time she was hiking through the ruins of an ancient civilization, she was really just trying to show us the amazing things that are out there in this world, and that we can all do the things that excite us if we actually go out and find these opportunities. I am highly thankful for all of the opportunities Mrs. Jordan has brought to my attention. If you ever had her as a teacher before, I'm sure you agree that Mrs. Jordan wants to see her students succeed, and she would do whatever in her power to help them get there. So I thank Mrs. Jordan for my appreciation for history and English, but also for showing me the possibilities of the future, and that it isn't far-fetched to dream big and achieve great things if you work hard. I hope that one day I can be even half as knowledgeable as Mrs. Jordan, or impact anywhere close to as many lives as she has. I'm a better student and a better person because of you. Thank you, Mrs. Jordan.
Today, I'm honoring my ninth-grade English teacher, Ms. Davis Blake. As a new incoming freshman to Roseville High School, I, like many other freshmen, was scared. I made the transition from a one-story middle school where everything was by each other and I knew most of the teachers, to a two-story high school where everything was on the opposite end of the school, and I knew not a single teacher. It was pretty scary to me. However, Ms. Blake made the transition pretty easy for me. She was not just my teacher, but also my friend. She would stay with me after school, and we would just talk. She made English my favorite subject. She always came in the classroom with such spunk and humor that would just light up the room, enticing me to want to learn more and more about etos, peitos, and logos. Ms. Blake made me want to answer questions and raise my hand when I didn't understand things. Me and my 28-year-old brother still argue to this day who our favorite student was. It's me, by the way. This example alone speaks volumes how phenomenal of a teacher Ms. Blake is, that a student from many years ago can still say, after having gone through college, "My favorite teacher was my high school English teacher," not just because she was funny or smart, but because she was an all-around great person. She was my first friend I made in high school, and I truly thank her so much for allowing this weird freshman girl to sit in her classroom and talk even after school. I thank her for instilling in me a new passion for learning more. I thank her for making me feel like Roseville was my school and helping me see it as a place where I could truly reach my full potential. Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
I'm here tonight to honor a teacher who has made all the difference in my life, Ms. Colias. I want to start off by saying something you might not hear as often as you should. I appreciate all that you do, and for that, thank you. Thank you for answering all of my seemingly never-ending questions. Thank you for taking on this stress-inducer known as Student Assembly. Thank you for doing such an important job that doesn't get recognized or paid enough for all the work you put in. There is no way to express fully how much you mean to me and how grateful I am to have had you as a teacher. You have changed me and my view on life. I can only hope that these words can convey these feelings. I first met Ms. Colias my freshman year in Student Assembly. Freshman me was someone who was quite shy and timid when it came to sharing her ideas with everyone. Fast forward to my junior year, a couple of Student Assembly members were chosen to go to a leadership conference. I was one of them. Up to this point, I was still scared to share ideas and take charge in Student Assembly. I was surprised to hear that I had been chosen, but I guess Ms. Colias saw something in me, and I didn't want to disappoint her. Going to that leadership conference was a push that has made all the difference for me. A short summary is that dancing to Cotton Eye Joe and seeing other students' leaders discussing what they had done in their communities inspired me. It helped me see the power I had, if only I had the confidence to use my voice. Despite knowing Ms. Colias for two years before, I would have her as a teacher my junior year for AP US Gov. Because of that class, I learned a lot about government and politics, more specifically about how ordinary people affect change. I wanted to define two terms I learned: political apathy and political efficacy. Political apathy is when voters have no interest in politics or voting. Why do these people not care? One reason is a lack of political efficacy, the amount of belief people have that their actions can actually influence something. It's easier to fall prey to pessimism and believe that in the end, we're too small to really make a big change. But from this class and Ms. Colias, I see the importance of fighting against that idea and doing what's hard, remaining positive when everything seems dark. I believe I have the power to make change in this world. As I continued to grow that year, I faced a new obstacle: having to deliver a speech in public. Like many, I was never pumped for anything that meant I had to speak in front of others. But through Ms. Colias' guidance and encouragement, I practiced becoming an effective speaker and overcoming my fears. After delivering my speech to my class, I was chosen along with two others to deliver it at Project Soapbox's regional competition. I would end up winning first place. It's safe to say that freshman Flora would never have had the confidence to do something like that, or ever thought she'd be able to grow so much. Ms. Colias, I don't think you know what doing the bare minimum is. You go above and beyond what is required of you, always trying to find new ways to teach your students, and doing your best to balance all of your responsibilities. Despite how stressful it all is, I believe in you to always end up on the other side okay. You have given me a multitude of opportunities that have guided me on my journey to become the best I can be. When I turn 18 and am able to vote for the first time ever, I'll be thinking of you, Ms. Colias, and what you taught me in Gov. I'll remember you fondly for the rest of my life as your amazing teacher who has made all the difference.
I can hope, I can only hope that these words can convey these feelings. I first met Ms. Colias my freshman year in Student Assembly. Freshman me was someone who was quite shy and timid when it came to sharing her ideas with everyone. Fast forward to my junior year, a couple of Student Assembly members were chosen to go to a leadership conference. I was one of them. Up to this point, I was still scared to share ideas and take charge in Student Assembly. I was surprised to hear that I had been chosen, but I guess Ms. Colias saw something in me and I didn't want to disappoint her. Going to that leadership conference was a push that has made all the difference for me. A short summary is that dancing to Cotton Eye Joe and seeing other students' leaders discussing what they had done in their communities inspired me. It helped me see the power I had, if only I had the confidence to use my voice. Despite knowing Ms. Colias for two years before, I would have her as a teacher my junior year for AP US Gov. Because of that class, I learned a lot about government and politics, more specifically about how ordinary people affect change. I wanted to find two terms I learned: political apathy and political efficacy. Political apathy is when voters have no interest in politics or voting. Why do these people not care? One reason is a lack of political efficacy. The amount of belief people have that their actions can actually influence something. It's easy to fall prey to pessimism and believe that in the end, we're too small to really make a big change. But from this class and Ms. Colias, I see the importance of fighting against that idea and doing what's hard, remaining positive when everything seems dark. I believe I have the power to make change in this world. As I continued to grow that year, I faced a new obstacle: having to deliver a speech in public. Like many, I was never pumped for anything that meant I had to speak in front of others. But through Ms. Colias' guidance and encouragement, I practiced becoming an effective speaker and overcoming my fears. After delivering my speech to my class, I was chosen along with two others to deliver it at Project Soapbox's regional competition. I would end up winning first place. It's safe to say that freshman Flora would never have had the confidence to do something like that or ever thought she'd be able to grow so much. Ms. Colias, I don't think you know what doing the bare minimum is. You go above and beyond what is required of you, always trying to find new ways to teach your students and doing your best to balance all of your responsibilities. Despite how stressful it all is, I believe in you to always end up on the other side okay. You have guided me, you have given me a multitude of opportunities that have guided me on my journey to become the best I can be. When I turn 18 and am able to vote for the first time ever, I'll be thinking of you, Ms. Colias, and what you taught me in Gov. I'll remember you fondly for the rest of my life as the amazing teacher who has made all the difference.
That almost made me cry. Okay, anyway. It is my privilege to honor Mr. Graumanns as my teacher because during my high school career, he has been, he has been a big motivator for me. Graumanns always pushes me to do my best, even when it's 8:00 AM and I have no energy, but he does from his super healthy kelp drink. He inspires me to try new things like competition, which will always be a great memory and experience. I'll often ask Graumanns what he needs help with and he'll just tell me to cook what I feel like cooking, which gives me a lot of freedom to express my creativity and my enjoyment with baking. And his approval always makes it worth almost missing the bus. Now, if anyone knows Graumanns, they know that talking to him can sometimes be like herding cats. He has so many great ideas and so many thoughts that keep him running and sometimes it's hard to catch up. But that's the reason he's so suc- so suc- so successful and inspiring. Graumanns will never shoot down a kid's idea, but instead he builds on it and that is what a great teacher should be. Someone who inspires their students to make a five-course meal, even if it may not be used for a service. Graumanns is dedicated to his job and teaching others about his passion, which sparks light in me. So thank you, Mr. Graumanns, for two years of letting me tease you and make a mess in your kitchen and bake whatever crazy idea I had. Oh, and eat a lot of food.
Tonight I'll be honoring Mrs. Drewin. When I joined journalism my freshman year, I really didn't think that much of it. I liked writing and it seemed like an easy one-trimester class to take. I did my work and laughed with Akil every day and that was pretty much that. But by the end of the trimester, Mrs. Drewin had told me how much she loved my writing and work ethic and began recommending to me that I join newspaper. I put it on the back burner for a year while I took some other classes, but I ended up finally making the choice to join at the end of my sophomore year and I'm forever grateful that I did. Newspaper and yearbook has taught and given me so much. Mrs. Drewin has given me so much. She's made me realize the leader that I can be. Before she was around, I never thought I was one to be a leader. I'd speak up every now and then, but her constant positive reinforcement and making sure I know my potential is what really changed me and I will never be able to thank her enough. She's given me family. Her, Akil, Ariel, Miranda, everyone. It's something so indescribable, so special. Something I'll remember and cherish for the rest of my life. The memories we've all made together, from the yearbook camp summer trip to nights at the school until 8:00 PM finishing layout, to even just spending hours talking about anything and everything together. Mrs. Drewin has given me the best thing I could ever ask for in the world. Having teachers you can count on and who motivate you to become the best you can be is so important and I definitely lucked out with Mrs. Drewin. She constantly pushes us to do better and better, all while recognizing what we've accomplished along the way. They may seem like little words and actions, but it's impacted me so much and has made me realize I want to do the exact same for people as I continue on with my life. Thank you, Mrs. Drewin, for everything you've done for me and so many others. You will forever be the light that came in and changed my life.
Where do I begin? Most of you know that I am never at a loss for words. But when you ask me to choose a mentored honor, you often think of a teacher or a teacher that has connected with you. I don't think I've ever had a teacher who I don't like. Every teacher has taught me something new and has helped develop my education. But as I begin to think over the past four years, here at Roseville High School, I have come to appreciate the opportunities to develop my leadership skills and the person who's been there the most has been Dr. Patrick Adams. I may not sit in his classroom, but I have sat in his office countless times. Going over ideas, getting approvals, inventing about the typical school issues. I've worked with Dr. Adams to get new events off the ground, like senior painting parking spots. He endured my constant emails throughout the summer and approved the endless amount of spirit days. Dr. Adams is a strong, quiet leader that exhibits respect. He has always been patient when listening to me. He has never made me feel that my ideas or visions were silly or even unreachable. He has guided me to develop my ideas into actions and how to present them well to my peers. He has encouraged me to keep working out my ideas until they're ready to be put in place. He guides me to the right contacts. Dr. Adams isn't the typical administrator that hides in his office or is too busy in meetings. He's very, he has a very visible presence. He greets you with a warm welcome and gets to know his students very well. As busy of a man he is, he is very approachable and makes time to be there for his students. He shows us by example what a leader should be. I don't think I've ever seen him in a bad mood. In our meetings, he is able to relate issues into wonderful teaching moments while keeping his super calm demeanor. So today I would like to thank and honor Dr. Patrick Adams.
Scott Wheeler. Some might say a student calling a teacher by their first name is a sign of disrespect. But in the way that I'm referencing him, it's meant to be nothing but honorable. When I think of a good teacher, I think of someone who shows deep passion for their field of work. Someone who can give advice and provide a listening ear and someone with a strong work ethic. All that which pertained to Mr. Wheeler. I remember the first time I had him as a teacher. It was nice seeing a comforting face, especially as I was a freshman. I will never forget when he told me he had mentioned me to his daughter. Mr. Wheeler had always talked to me with respect and there will always, that will always mean something to me, especially because at the time, I was a freshman. He inspired me and opened my eyes to science in a way that I had never been taught before. Mr. Wheeler had gave me a chance to tell my story of when I had scarlet fever in my science project, let me drop one of the winning eggs off a staircase and even gave us an opportunity to hear him rap about science, but we're not going to talk about that. Mr. Wheeler always encouraged me to do my best and always reminded me that it was okay to fail, as long as you got back up again. If I had to sum up Scott in three words, I would use strong, caring, and intelligent. I can only imagine what Mr. Wheeler has gone through, yet he has influenced and motivated so many of his students. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler, for being such a selfless man and it was an honor and a pleasure of having you as my teacher in high school.
I am recognizing Ms. Gasko. Ms. Gasko had a major impact on my childhood in elementary school as my fourth grade teacher. She made school fun. I was always interested in what she had to say. I knew not to talk when she drew a crab on the board, which meant, "Don't mess with her" or test her page. We had Greek parties where we would dress up in bed sheets and eat weird food. We would read a series of Unfortunate Events. Now, we didn't read all 13 books, but she summed them up and we watched the movie at the end of the year. Ms. Gasko taught me like to always look on the bright side of things, to always let your pessimistic, I mean, let your optimistic thoughts outweigh the pessimistic ones. And she was always there for me. So I appreciate you, Ms. Gasko, and thank you for being my teacher.
First of all, I want to say good evening to everyone and I want to thank you guys all for being here to honor the wonderful staff that Roseville Community Schools brings into our buildings. They really do so much for us and it's a great thing to have them all here. The person that I've chosen to honor tonight is Ms. Gabriella Schmollenberg, who teaches ninth grade English and AP Literature at the high school. Having the privilege to honor Ms. Schmollenberg really goes full circle for me because my mom was able to have her as a student and now she's able to pass that knowledge on to me as my teacher. So that's really cool for me. Ms. Schmollenberg is one of the best and one of my favorite staff members, not only at the high school, but in the entire school district. She provides so much knowledge to all of her classes and tries her very best to instill not only educational values but life lessons into her students as well. She has helped me immensely, from talking to me on my first day at the high school to talking about college and life outside of school, to helping me finalize my signature so I can sign all of my documents the same way. In many ways, Ms. Schmollenberg is like a second mother for me at the high school and her passion for students is unmatched. Thank you for being a great teacher and making a difference in our school, our students' education, and most of all, our students' lives.
Today I'm honoring Mrs. Earl. The very first time we met, it was the first time I've been in Roseville Middle. I had just moved and she was here to give me a tour throughout the school. I had just stayed at schools and I'd known any, nobody. At the time, I'd remembered my goal was not to be friends with anybody in hopes of moving back to my old school, which didn't work. Jumping forward three years, I was more open as a person because of Ms. Earl. I had became friends with a lot more people and at the time, I, it was my first time trying out for basketball. I was very nervous and almost didn't go because I didn't know anybody trying out. Once I walked into the gym, you were the first person I saw. I got really excited and I tried my hardest to make the team. I had gotten on JV, but that didn't bug me since you were the coach. I hadn't remembered, I'd looked forward every day to going to practices, even the ones that we got in trouble and heads run suicides. And I had, I just want to say, thank you for allowing me to look forward to all those practices and making me the person I am today.
Okay, so I'm going to be honoring our girls varsity basketball coach, Andy Houghton. I'm not that good a writer, so sorry about that. Ever since I've been in high school, I've seen you accomplish amazing things. We won our MAC tournament twice since I've been at RHS and we were the best in our league last year. Now we have a brand-new varsity team and I cannot wait to accomplish so many more goals this year. When I first started playing basketball, I had no idea I would end up where I am today. I know you have worked harder than anyone to get us where we are and I am so excited for where this season is going to take us. You make sure we keep our steady grades and attendance in school and you never are afraid to give anyone advice. Being on this team feels like a family more than anything and it's crazy that I'm a senior now because it seems like yesterday when you brought me up for, to play on varsity for districts. Every time I step on the court, I gain more confidence and that's because you pushed me to give 110% and to never give up. I know our season has just gotten started, but I can't, I can already tell that we are going to leave our mark on the school. I am so grateful to be a part of this team and thank you for being the best coach I could ever have.
The teacher I chose to recognize today is Mr. Hazard. Not only does he teach my auto shop class, but he also sets an example on what it means to work hard. Thanks to Mr. Hazard, my love for cars and working on them has grown immensely. He has fueled my passion and shown me valuable life skills that I will use forever. Since his coming to Roseville High School not long ago, I could tell how devoted he was to build the auto program into something great. Mr. Hazard works non-stop to make the program the best it can be and have a lasting impact on his students. I appreciate Mr. Hazard because he recognizes and appreciates good, hard workers. He allows me to unlock my true potential and gives me a platform to utilize my skills. I didn't choose Mr. Hazard just because he's a great auto teacher, but because he has demonstrated to me that he values hard work, dedication, and trustworthiness. He has given me the best auto shop experience I could ever ask for and I can't thank him enough for it. He is constantly engaging my own and my classmates' interests and he teaches me something new every day. Coming from a student that tries their hardest to build trust with their teachers and form a relationship, it means a lot to know that Mr. Hazard recognizes those values and shares them. Thank you, Mr. Hazard, for giving me such a great experience, for teaching me everything you've taught me, for trusting me enough to work on your cars, and most importantly, for taking something that I was already extremely passionate about and elevating that passion to new heights.
So it all began with my freshman year of high school. I was a very kind of shy, quiet type of kid. I remember it was Art Explorer A, I think it was my first hour. And I was all sleepy, nice and tired, and sitting in the art room at the desk. This teacher decided to start roll call of who is here and I wasn't paying too much attention and said, "Yeah," when I heard my name get called. Big mistake of mine, trust me. I was asked to come up to the front of the classroom and I did. And I was asked, "Is that how you respond when someone calls your name?" And I was like, "What? Yeah?" And he goes, "Here." And I said, "Okay." I sat back down. Let me just say, I was scared the rest of that class. I thought that teacher disliked me so much. I was very wrong, so for probably three weeks, I sat within that classroom and was quiet and sat there thinking, "This teacher hates me," or whatever, you know, all grumpy all the time. And then finally, one of my friends ended up telling this teacher, "You know Haley Baller thinks you hate her." I was like, "Oh, no." Called me up again after everyone left. And then he goes, "I don't hate you, you know that." And he's just, after that moment of hearing that he doesn't hate me, I realized, "Wow, I like this teacher, this teacher likes me." It was just like, what a coincidence. But ever since that day in that classroom, Mr. Randolph has been a huge person in my life. Things like that I love to hear. Of, "You're tougher than that, you're strong." It means a lot. And to hear that every single day means so much. I just want to let you know, I appreciate you very much and I do have to work on that final drawing.
Today, I have chosen to honor one of Roseville High School's assistant principals, Dennis Borzy. Borzy has worked for the school since 2002 and manages to treat every student at RHS with individuality and that's why I selected to honor him today. As I walk through the halls of RHS, most of the time I would be overwhelmed with the stresses of newspaper and now yearbook. No matter what, he always had something funny to say and added a little brightness to my day. It is Borzy's consistent enjoyment for what he does that separates him from other staff members and helps him connect with each of his Roseville students. I hope that you continue to make the impact that you have on me for years to come for thousands of more students. Thank you. I just want to say that you have inspired me to reach my excellence in my academic career.
Mr. Madison is one of, is one of, if not the first teacher to allow me to express myself in a creative way, which I personally believe that expressing yourself in a creative way is more important than life itself. And he helped me realize the talents that I've, I never knew I had, like my proficiency in editing. He's a very cheerful person in class that I appreciate the most of all because his attitude feels genuine and a contrast to my overall negative attitude. Which, uh, people may know that I'm not the most cheerful person you can ever meet. Since we both are, are men, I feel like we, like this difference between us, our two personality types have brought us closer together and that is why I am honoring Mr. Madison tonight.
When choosing who I was going to honor, I chose who inspired me the most. And that was, that was Mr. Herbertson. He has had the biggest impact on my life. I remember sixth grade, I was scared, I was scared of him because he was just, just really tall guy, really loud. And I was just a little sixth grader, you know, just there. And with time, he became one of my best friends. And I don't think I would be here today if he wasn't in my life. And I don't think I would be here today if he wasn't in my life. He has gone, he's, he showed me that no matter what, you can be tough. And it's such an honor to have him here again because I've missed him so much. When he came to the high school, I was so happy. But when he left, I started crying because I missed him. And so I am very grateful to have Mr. Herbertson in my life.
Today, I'm honoring my English teacher in middle school, Ms. Baldes. You've been there for me ever since day one in middle school when I couldn't even speak English. Anytime I've ever needed someone to talk to, I always knew that I could come to you. I'm not the person I was back then. I think it is important that everyone knows that real teachers teach from the heart and not from the book. And that's something you show me every day. You treat me like a son and look out for me better than anyone else. I'm a better person because I met you. You worked so hard to get to know the kids that you come across. And you taught me a lot of what I know now. It's been such a long time knowing you and now I'm finally a senior ready to graduate. I'll take what you taught me with me wherever I go next. I appreciate everything you've done to help me become who I am today. Thank you so much.
Okay, definitely not stealing off of Anthony, but also good evening. Thank you for being here and I hope you're having a good day. The staff member that I've chosen to honor is very close to my family and I. She's been around since middle school and now she's following me to the high school and she's just helping me get through every day. She's always told me what I needed and helped me get there. She's there for me no matter what, through the good times and the bad times. The love I have for her is matched only by a handful. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for all that you do for me. Thank you so much, Mrs. Kelly O'Callaghan.
Educators, before we have you take your seats, just one note, in what has become a truly thankless profession sometimes, please let tonight serve as a great thank you. From a district full of great teachers, you have been called out by these students and honored, and deservedly so. And so from the parents, from the administration, and especially from those students that honored you, thank you for everything you do for Roseville.
Thank you so much for coming and for raising these wonderful children, not children anymore, almost college age. I'm Rieta Ashbaugh, I'm the Executive Director of Business and Finance. I got to enjoy my day today with Fatima and she was a wonderful student to have in my office. I think that she had a good day, I hope anyways, and learned some things about our district. Can you share with us who you brought with you today?
I brought my mom and my little sister.
Welcome, mom and little sister. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dave Rice. I'm the Assistant Superintendent and I got to spend my day with Megan here. And we had a good day and a nice talk and another really quality student that we see coming through here and I have the privilege to know her father and work with her mother. So it was just a great day today and thank you. And why don't you point them out to us, who came with you?
I'm here with my mom and dad.
Hi, I'm Matt McCartney, School Board Treasurer. I did not get to spend much time with Caleb today because unfortunately I have a day job. We did exchange a couple of nice emails and I hope you had a good day and learned a lot about the board activities and, you know, what we try to get accomplished up here. So I appreciate you guys all volunteering and it's so good to see, what an amazing crowd. This is what it's all about, the best of the best. So you came with-
My mom's in the car, she don't phone.
Mom's in the car, okay, well, that's okay. Thank you, everybody.
Good evening, everyone. This is truly a beautiful night. This is one of the nights, besides graduation, that we're always welcome to see and happy to be here. And I would like to thank everybody for all their hard work they did, the administration, the board, the teachers, the parents, the students. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it here today either, but I heard it was very nice. So congratulations to everyone.
I'm Mark Blaskowski, Superintendent, and today I spent some time with Isabella and trying to explain to her what my role is, is running the district. And so we had some good conversation about snow days, at least. So what's so nice is seeing these articulate, smart kids, ready to move on to the next level and being leaders for us as we age on and move on. It gives you a sense of hope, you know, seeing these types of kids. So we appreciate you. I thank you, Isabella, for asking me so many tough questions on my first run at this as Superintendent. So congratulations. And introduce your parents out there.
So I brought my parents and my cousin Sarah and my sister Samantha.
We're gonna have you introduce your parents. Have them raise their hands so we can see them.
I brought my mom, my dad, and my brother in the front row.
I'm Teresa Janey, I'm President of the Board and Lily did a fine job. She's willing to take my position anytime I'm sick. I would feel very good if she could do that. They were so much fun today. When they first come in, they're so quiet and don't want to say anything. By the end of the day, we had so much fun. They did a few little jokes with us for the board just to kind of keep ourselves laughing out there. But it was, it was just a fun day and for the honor of the teachers that we have, we know we do not pay you enough. We certainly know that from the bottom of our hearts. We're trying to get the state to chip in and step up a little bit and keep this district because we're the, I think we're the best-kept secret in this county and I'm around a lot of schools in the county. And I, spending the day with these kids today, it's been awesome. So I want to thank you very much for all your efforts. I hope you had a good time, you learned something. I, Ms. Kelly O'Callaghan is going, I think, to the Navy with Mike told us today he's gonna go in the Navy. So she's been his teacher since middle school and high school. I think she's gonna follow him into the Navy, so. Let's give Mike a hand for serving this country. We appreciate that. And you want to introduce us with you today?
I'm here with my dad and my sister Rose in the back row.
Well, I've got, I guess we're gonna introduce the city while I've got this here. We have our mayor, Mayor Taylor. Mayor Fred Kim Hagerty. Councilman Haw, Kathy. Councilman Stewitt Tija, they came to lunch with us today and I'm sure that they're glad they came tonight. Thank you. They're great supporters of our school and we appreciate them very much.
Hi, my name is Kevin Swetanowski, I'm Vice President of the Board. Parents, you should be very proud of these students this morning as they were doing their go-around and, you know, their future plans, you know, colleges and some of the topics that these kids are gonna take in, you know, either starting out at Macomb or going further on to, you know, four-year education. You as parents should be proud of these kids. Unfortunately, we didn't hear a whole lot of education, but that's okay. I mean, there's a lot of other kids in the high school, but you should be proud of them. Unfortunately, I was not able to spend a whole lot of time this morning as well. I, you know, had to work during the day as well. But I started my day out this morning, I made the full circle. I went to Abigail's, I didn't realize her mother was over at Huron Park. So I spent the morning there and, you know, watching 175 little kids go through the, you know, the breakfast line in the morning and it's like, I give, give all of you, staff members and the cooks and whatever, I don't know how you do that every day in those buildings. So congratulations and thank you, staff members, for everything that you do. And parents, once again, congratulations and you should be very proud. So, Abigail, who's here with you today?
My mom, my dad, and my two little brothers.
Hello, my name is Michael Anderson, I'm one of the Board Trustees. I had the pleasure of being able to spend the whole day with all of these kids. And I just have to say, the questions that they were able to ask and the answers to the questions that we gave them were great. Thank you, parents, teachers, for, you know, raising them, furthering their education. And since I'm tween three right now, all of you, why don't you introduce who you came with?
I came with my mom and my best friend.
Where's mom?
I came with my dad, my mom, my stepdad, and my little sister.
Good evening, thank you for coming. Pete Hedmark, Assistant Superintendent, Personnel. Great, great event with these students and I think my favorite part is when some of them reach back, years back, to elementary school, Ms. Gaska and middle school, Ms. Earl. And we have teachers that come walking in the door that we haven't seen in a few years, like Ms. Blake comes back out of retirement for this event. Thank you very much. Mr. Herbertson, they reached back to you in the sixth grade when this youngster had you. It really says a lot that they remember going far back and then teachers that they had just had in Fatima's situation, Ms. Reinowski this year with Chem. So it really is great to see kids reaching far back in their childhood and right up to present day. Rim is a real special person. She's gonna be a CPA and end up in the land of sunny California, so we'll all be jealous. Introduce, who brought you?
I'm here with my mother and my two younger sisters. They're all the way in the back.
I'm Doug Denning and I'm the General Counsel for the school district and unfortunately, I didn't get the chance to spend the day with Michoni. But in speaking with her here tonight, she indicated that she was fully composed. She didn't shed a tear, but when she goes home, she says she may. And that's a sign of somebody that could be a great trial lawyer. You go home and then you become the puddle, but not within eyesight. She also indicates that she never wants to use the word draconian again. Michoni, you want to introduce your family?
I brought my mom, who's sitting next to the mayor.
I'm John Steenland, Director of Building and Grounds, Bond Coordinator. Spending the afternoon with this young man with a pleasure. I learned a lot, I think more from him than he learned from me today. But he's definitely capable of taking over my position, which I told him that it may be available. Sorry, Joe. But again, I was able to do a lot with the bond and putting this thing, I find out that he's really into auto shop. We're able to give a lot of great new tools to the auto shop to help these students learn and it was a great pleasure meeting you and spending the day with you.
Did you bring with you my mom, my dad, and my brother?
You stepped on my Navy thing, this was mine, counterpart.
Straight minds think alike, then, don't they?
I got the opportunity to spend, I'm Joe Janey, I'm the Marketing Communications for the district. I got the opportunity to spend some time with Mikey today, he's a great kid. His parents a long time, they're great people too. So very excited to see what he does in the future. He asked some great questions today and I learned a lot about him, so it was a fun day. So thank you all.
I came with my parents, sitting over there by O'Callaghan.
One final thing, I was a little put off to know that he walks in with a better beard than I have. So, but, no.
At least he could grow a beard.
Good evening, Danny, I'm Mike Antoine, Detective Director of Roseville Schools. I had the pleasure of working with Ahmad today. Ahmad is a very interesting person. He's only been in our district for six or seven years. In fact, he's only been in the United States for six or seven years and he's doing a wonderful job, as you can hear him speak and talk and just hearing about his family and what they've gone through and, you know, I got to share with him what happens behind the scenes with the technology in our district. And it was just a real interesting conversation. I really enjoyed his presence today and I think our future is bright because of him. Ahmad, would you like to introduce your parents?
I came here with my mom, right there.
Hi, Joe Smith, Coordinator of Transportation and Maintenance. I was with Lexi most of the day. We tried to have a lot of fun, we tried to trick a bus driver. I had Lexi talk on dispatch and we tried to get the bus driver to bring a surprise. It didn't go so well, so they were on to us. But, you know, brave future, wants to be a law enforcement, so good luck to you.
I came here by myself.
Nicole, Coordinator of State and Federal Grants. I'm new to the Roseville District, so, and I have no jokes. So, I came, I had, I enjoyed spending time with Tyler today. One of the things, I've been an educator for 18 years and getting out of the classroom, one of the things I always say is, "I miss the kids." So Tyler was able to give me that, what I needed, you know, the connection with the kids, so I really enjoyed that. And he's going to become a director someday and I want his autograph.
I came here with my mom, my little brother, and my stepdad Mike.
Good evening, my name is Andrea Dyser, Coordinator of Food Service. And I was, Akil was with me today and we did a lot of talking about the school meals programs and our requirements. And he told me a lot about what a hard worker he is and his family's restaurant, you know, and about his plans to go to college. But he was thinking, should he stay home? And I told him, always go to college and then help with the family business because it'll only help you more once you get there and learn things on communication and business and everything. It was a pleasure to talk with him this morning.
I'm here with my wonderful mother, right here.
Good evening, I'm Teresa Tamam, I'm the Director of Special Education. Haley had actually reached out to me before we met and she had some great questions via email and then we spent some time together today and she probably learned way more about special education than she really wanted to know. Because those of you that know me know I like to talk. But I don't like to talk in front of crowds, so it's always interesting that I'm last and so has to be this whole time. Haley asked me a very interesting question. She said, "You know that room at the high school that's called the IEP room?" She said, "What happens in there?" So I was able to talk to her and it's interesting to think a place that I spend so much time, you know, she wasn't sure what really goes on in there. So I think we had some good talks. Haley's unsure of what she wants to do, but she definitely understands that that's okay and it's okay to change once you decide something. It's okay to make changes because it's not set in stone, especially at your age. It was a pleasure to know you.
I'm here with my mom, my dad, and my little brother.
Ms. Green couldn't be here tonight and today, actually, all day. She had some treatments she had to have done. And Mr. Francis Coney was here during the day, but he has his wife at home tonight he had taken care of. So they were here and Ms. Green felt really bad she couldn't be here, but I spoke to Trinity about that. So next thing in order is to adjourn, so Mr. President, can you end the meeting?
All right, I'll need a motion for adjournment.
I motion to adjourn.
Motion by Anthony Rosati.
I support.
Support by Abby Barnett, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.